This is a regular board of education meeting for today, Tuesday, March 18th, 2025. And first up, please stand for the Budge releases. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, in the name of our beloved and the holy Father, Natale, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Okay, next up is our monthly school recognition. So with that, we'd like to welcome our friends from Woodrow Wilson, Dan Miller, and Laura Hansbrough.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dan Miller. I'm the principal at Woodrow Wilson Elementary School, and I'm joined this evening by our assistant principal, Laura Hansbrough. Thank you for having us tonight. And tonight, we wanted to highlight some of the things that we have been doing at the school to increase family engagement amongst our families. Three major reasons are for to improve academics, to improve behaviors, and also to improve our attendance. With the focus on the district SEP being in attendance this year, that's what the primary focus of the activities are. Again, because the district SEP, we're mimicking that and really highlighting all of these activities to improve the daily attendance and to decrease the chronic attendance. Just right now, I'll highlight some of the events that we have been doing. We started the year off with a trunk or treat in which we had over 200 families participate. Not only did families come to support the trick or treat, but we also had community members come as well. In the top middle picture there, you can see Woodrow Wilson alumni came. We have the oldest alumni, elementary alumni association in the United States, and they really play a huge part in the school, and they participate in a lot of the activities that we do as well. Also had students from Bantamton University come to do some of the trunks, and it really was just a really good community event to start the year off. One of the other programs that we do is we offer the partners program, which a lot of the elementary schools in the district do. They will have a lot of activities, hand-on activities, art activities, and things for students and for adults to do together. So it can be a parent or an adult close to the child, and how we structure at Wilson is we'll do two nights a week for the partners program, Mondays and Wednesdays. On Mondays, we will run the program directly after school at three o'clock so that families can, that are there to pick up and wouldn't have an opportunity to get back to the school that evening can participate on Mondays, and then on Wednesdays, we'll do the same program, but we offer it at five o'clock at night. So that it just varies the hour. So we found that we get more families participating in the program if you offer it at different times instead of doing it at the same time each evening. And we had 200 students register this year. Now, some of those are siblings, so I wouldn't say it was 200 different families, but we had 200 participants in the program this year. One of the other activities that we do, we take it out to the high school is we do a family swim night. We usually do that in the winter to try and break up the monotony of the cold weather. We just had ours a few weeks ago, about three weeks ago, and we had 52 students show up to the swim night at the high school. We did offer a math night this year and had over 25 families come to the math night. Just the math night offered interactive games. You hear a lot, the parents will want to understand the math. They can't do the homework with their students. They're having trouble, and they don't understand the math to be able to help out at home. So doing some interactive nights to just explain exactly what is, what is being done with ten frames and things of that nature in the classroom so that the parents have some hand-on activities and then in turn are able to support the learning at home as well. We offer glow dance in the spring. It's one of our well-attended events. People will have a really good time at that. We had over 150 families participate in the glow dance last spring, and again, it wasn't just students. We invited families to come in, and it really was a nice evening. And then our cultural night that we offer in the spring as well. We have over 50 students right now, ELL students at Woodrow Wilson. We are over 20 different countries that we have students from, and we run a cultural night, and it's really just a wonderful evening where people will come in, volunteer to set up tables representing their culture, different food. They bring in different foods. They bring in different dances. We've had people come in and do different dances, just a variety of activities to expose everyone to all the different cultures that we do have at school. The impact, again, we've had a few different impacts for us. We're in year two of our LSI status, which means we're locally supported. Local support and improvement. We are continuing to focus on attendance, and as you can see at the midway point here this year, our daily attendance is up over 90%, and our chronic absenteeism so far is at 40%, which our goal, our school goal this year and our SEP plan is to have it at 37.3%, and we're sitting on 40 right now, but that would indicate a 5% decrease for us and students who are chronically absent. Would also like to point out the SEL, the, just the amount of camaraderie that students feel at the building. We are currently sitting on 11 discipline referrals for the entire school here. So we've had a lot of, put in a lot of work with our staff, and they just do a tremendous job of connecting not only with the students, but also with the students' families, and we're just very proud of all the hard work that the staff's been doing at the school. Any questions?
Questions or comments from the board?
Dan, it's certainly good to see that your impact, the program, your sponsoring are having an effect on attendance, and your goal is to improve attendance, how that's, how that's working. So it's a very good program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Laura. I really appreciate it. I know that Woodrow Wilson is a working class, all of our alma mater bunches as well, with the ELLA, the Star State tester coming up, which is those results of the ELLA and then the Math in April. Locally supported school needs a school in standing, so they're the most recent school with the math accountability standards across the district. So clearly, the alma mater work has paid off and continues to pay off, so thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the first of the two public comment periods. Does anyone want to come up and speak? Save me for reading the rules of this panel. Okay, so go ahead and move to I am five day approval of the minutes. This will be approving the minutes of the work session in the regular meeting held February 25th, 2025. We have a motion to approve and accept the minutes. By Sean, second by Lisa, on the paper. Aye. Admittedly approved. It takes us to the financial report of the month of February 2025. Those were circulated prior to the board meeting. Are there any questions or comments? If so, we have a representative from CBO here in attendance this evening. Can I answer questions? Questions on the financial report?
I was trying to think of some question for you, Chris, just to maybe just talk with the background.
It says, "Look after one another."
We'll call this a business case.
Love your lunch, but next one just for the board.
This is recently promoted within the CBO organization, so he's here, but he was our president before, and now we're in different capacities. So it's time to tease him a little bit tonight.
Next up on the agenda is a presentation on the draft three-part budget with Dr. Thompson and Dr. Thomas facility.
Thank you very much. I'm going to start us off, but this presentation is really a collaborative effort, not only to myself and Jennifer, but also our central business offices. We have Angela Rogers here tonight. Unfortunately, I can't be walking this field. Now that's unfortunate. Angela's here with us, however, just in case she's still in Angela's volunteer to come in and also support some questions that she may have or some further details. She can also give a context across the region to budgets and how that's happening across our region. So as we start off with each presentation on budget, we are committed to align our budget, which is our numerical representation of our district's mission, to our goals that we strive to achieve each year: academic and institutional excellence, maintaining a supportive environment, as well as making sure that we have good experiences for students so that they can realize our mission and believe the long way back. And of course, in a safe and supportive, safe environment, both physically and emotionally, while maintaining and enhancing, if we are, if possible, those things that need to be enhanced or adjusted across the district. Thinking about long-term planning, and as we spoke last month about our budget, the foundation aid formula changing, looking at actual numbers per enrollment, and looking at shifting some of our funds from reserves to support our budget. We need to be thinking long-term about how long can that happen and what can be changed within our organization to realize a financially efficient budget for our community. So that mention over to Jennifer is going to start to dig in a little bit tonight, learn some more detail.
So this is a look at our anticipated revenue for the 2526 budget. So the proposed tax levy is on the top there, and we'll do it to get more into the tax levy conversation in a few slides. Other revenue brings an increase of 5.5%. And again, that revenue comes from pilots, earnings earnings, from rentals, from substitute and enrichment reimbursement that we run through BOCs, and other BOC services. State aid is an increase, projected increase of 3.92%. The appropriated reserves and the appropriated fund balance, Dr. Thompson just spoke a little bit to that. That is, I guess, savings account for the district, so to speak, so it helps us in case we have an emergency. There's a limit on how much we can put in these reserves, and the hope is that we won't have to use them next year so that we can then have it again for the following year to use. So last year, we had put money into the appropriate reserves, and we didn't end up having, haven't had to use that yet this year, so that is good news.
At five o'clock at night, so that it just varies the hour. So we found that we get more families participating in the program if you offer it at different times instead of doing it at the same time each evening. And we had 200 students register this year. Now, some of those are siblings, so I wouldn't say it was 200 different families, but we had 200 participants in the program this year. One of the other activities that we do, we take it out to the high school is we do a family swim night. We usually do that in the winter to try and break up the monotony of the cold weather. We just had ours a few weeks ago, about three weeks ago, and we had 52 students show up to the swim night at the high school. We did offer a math night this year and had over 25 families come to the math night. Just the math night offered interactive games. You hear a lot, the parents will want to understand the math. They can't do the homework with their students, they're having trouble, and they don't understand the math to be able to help out at home. So doing some interactive nights to just explain exactly what is being done with ten frames and things of that nature in the classroom so that the parents have some hands-on activities and then in turn are able to support the learning at home as well. We offer glow dance in the spring. It's one of our well-attended events. People will have a really good time at that. We had over 150 families participate in the glow dance last spring. And again, it wasn't just students. We invited families to come in and it really was a nice evening. And then our cultural night that we offer in the spring as well. We have over 50 students right now, ELL students at Woodrow Wilson. We are over 20 different countries that we have students from. And we run a cultural night and it's really just a wonderful evening where people will come in, volunteer to set up tables representing their culture. There's different food, they bring in different foods, they bring in different dances. We've had people come in and do different dances. Just a variety of activities to expose everyone to all the different cultures that we do have at school. The impact, again, we've had a few different impacts for us. We're in year two of our LSI status, which means we're locally supported, local support improvement. We are continuing to focus on attendance. And as you can see, at the midway point here this year, our daily attendance is up over 90% and our chronic absenteeism so far is at 40%, which our goal, our school goal this year and our set plan is to have it at 37.3%. And we're sitting on 40 right now, but that would indicate a 5% decrease for us and students who are chronically absent. Would also like to point out the SEL, the, just the amount of camaraderie that students feel at the building. We are currently sitting on 11 discipline referrals for the entire school year. So we've had a lot of, put in a lot of work with our staff and they just do a tremendous job of connecting not only with the students, but also with the students' families. And we're just very proud of all the hard work that the staff's been doing at the school. Any questions?
Questions or comments from the board?
Dan, it certainly is good to see that your impact, the program, your sponsoring are having an effect on attendance and your goal is to improve attendance, how that's working. So it's a very good program. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Laura. I'm very appreciative. I know that Woodrow Wilson is a working part, has all of our alma bunches as well with the ELLA. The state tests are coming up, which is those results of the ELLA and then the math in April. Locally supported schools need to school in standing. So they're the most recent school with the maximum accountability status across the district. So clearly, the whole harm work has paid off and continues to pay off, so thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the first of the two public comment periods. Does anyone want to come up and speak? Save me for reading the rules of this panel. Okay. So go ahead and move to item 5A, approval of the minutes. This will be approving the minutes of the work session, the regular meeting held February 25th, 2025. We have a motion to approve and accept the minutes. By Sean, second by Lisa, on the paper. Aye. Admittedly approved. It takes us to the financial report of the month of February 2025. Those were circulated prior to the board meeting. Are there any questions or comments? If so, we have a representative from CBO here in attendance this evening. Can I answer questions? Questions on the financial report?
I was trying to think of some question for you, Chris, just to maybe talk with the board.
It says, "Look after one."
I know, we'll call this a mystery. Thank you. This is recently promoted within the CBO organization, so he's here. But he was our president before and now we're in a different capacity. So it's time to tease him a little bit tonight.
Next up on the agenda is a presentation on the draft three-part budget with Dr. Thompson and Dr. Tull facility.
Thank you very much. I'm going to start us off, but this presentation is really a collaborative effort on the use of myself and Jennifer, but also our central business offices. We have Daniel Rogers here tonight. Unfortunately, I can't be walking this field. Now, that's unfortunate. Angela's here with us, however, some questions that she's still, Angela, volunteer to come in and also support some questions that she may have or some further details. She can also give a context across the region to budgets and how that's happening across our region. So as we start off with each presentation on budget, we are committed to aligning our budget, which is our numerical representation of our district's mission to our goals that we strive to achieve each year. Academic and institutional excellence, maintaining a supportive environment, as well as making sure that we have good experiences for students so they can realize our mission and believe the long way back. And of course, in a safe and supportive, a safe environment, both physically and emotionally, while maintaining and enhancing, if possible, those things that need to be adjusted across the district. Thinking about long-term planning. And as we spoke last month about our budget, the foundation aid formula changing, looking at actual numbers per enrollment and looking at shifting some of our funds from reserves to support our budget. We need to be thinking long-term about how long can that happen and what can be changed within our organization to realize a financially efficient budget for our community. So that mention over to Jennifer is going to start to dig in a little bit tonight or in some more detail.
So this is a look at our anticipated revenue for the 2526 budget. So the proposed tax levy is on the top there. And we'll do to get more into the tax levy conversation in a few slides. Other revenue brings an increase of 5.55%. And again, that revenue comes from pilots, earnings, from rentals, from substitute and enrichment reimbursement that we run through BOSI's and other BOSI services. State aid is an increase, projected increase of 3.92. The appropriated reserves and the appropriated fund balance. Dr. Thompson just spoke a little bit to that. That is, I guess, savings account for the district, so to speak. So it helps us in case we have an emergency. There's a limit on how much we can put in these reserves. And the hope is that we won't have to use them next year so that we can then have it again for the following year to use. So last year, we had put money into the appropriate reserves and we didn't end up having, haven't had to use that yet this year. So that is good news. The appropriated fund balance on the bottom there, there's a specific one that we had set aside for the vehicles, the vans that we were able to purchase. So that was a one-time only purchase and that's why we see a decrease for next year budget to budget. So here we see the state aid. So based on the executive proposal at this point, the foundation aid is coming in with an increase of 3.18%. And again, what I'm sharing here tonight is budget to budget. So from the 2425 school year to the 2526. So that's actually budget to budget. The actual increase for foundation aid will be 2.62 and that's because we ended up receiving more in 2425 than budgeted because of the actual student data and changes in the student data before we actually got the amount. The building aid, which is the capital projects, see an increase. And then expenditure-driven aids, again, those are our BOSI's revenue that we gain back on federal aids, textbook, software, money, et cetera. This next slide, I'm going to ask Angela just to speak a little bit to how, where does tax levy come from? So we've been talking about a proposed amount and Angela's going to give us a little bit of information on the tax levy so we can have a conversation about the tax levy.
I just have one question while I'm still thinking of it. Is there a reference to federal aid for textbooks? Are we concerned based on, you know, a lot of the things we're hearing as far as just a little chaos on the federal level that makes us concerned at all about federal aid being affected in the negative direction for us?
So the textbook aid is actually state aid, so it doesn't come from the federal government. So we're okay, I think, for next year for the instructional material aids, textbook, hardware, software. There definitely has been conversation at the federal level. I think I talked a little bit about that next year last month. Right now, we're not overly concerned about things being lost at the federal level because of, you know, the laws that have been in place since like the 60s and 70s. We do see that maybe there could be some loss in reimbursement for school lunches. And of course, really, everything is up in the air, so there definitely could still be things coming. But right now, we're trying not to overreact and really just take things as they come.
Thank you.
So jumping into the tax levy limit, I'm not going to go through the entire calculation because that is the last, but we wanted to put this out here so that everybody could kind of see all of the pieces that flow into the tax levy limit calculation. You can see that we take, we start with the prior year tax levy. We add in applicable amounts for current year. We take out things for next year or add in based on the step and then we get to that maximum allowable levy for the tax. So what we really want to highlight is the components of the increase for the tax levy that we are seeing. So overall, we're going to be looking at about a one and a half million dollar increase to the tax levy limit, or about 3.26%. And so what you can see is that about 0.43 of the increase is coming from the tax-based growth factor. So that's your brick and mortar buildings. That's because we're seeing an increase in the buildings or in the properties in the Binghamton School District. And so really, a piece of that tax base, or tax base, is coming from just more things in Binghamton or brick and mortar buildings and, I mean. The allowable growth factor, that's the 2% that everybody always hears about. We talk about how we can't increase our tax levy more than 2%, but this is really the piece of the levy that pertains to that 2%. And this is going to take out, take up about $942,000 of that tax levy limit. We do have an increase to the equation for the capital levy. Those are all the things related to capital projects, BOSI's capital projects and things like that that have been voted on over the past few years. Pilots, we do actually see pilots decreasing, but what that means is the pilots are coming back onto the tax roll. So really, where we see the decrease of the pilots, the increase happens on the tax levy, but the companies who hold those pilots are really the ones who are going to make up the cost of those pilots on the tax roll. So overall, they make the tax levy go up to 3.26, but if it wasn't for the change in the pilot, we would see a tax levy increase of about 2.52%. The difference really is the companies who hold the pilots and what they have to pay in taxes now that they're back on the tax roll.
So Angela, we had the board level have talked quite a bit about over the years, pilots and the impact and the tax levy, so I really appreciate that. And without going into too much detail, when I think about, when I hear you say, because there are more new builds, right, in our city, and then we all pause and think about, I've always seen examples of down the street, I think, from this, from this building. So it's those renovations that are taking place?
Yep.
That are causing a growth-based factor to have to increase, is that correct?
Yep, it's really the investments in the community. And the tax-based growth factor, that's really the tongue question, come from the state. So that's not something that we locally decide, but that is those, that figure is given to us from the state.
And can it be off balance, can it be off, our balance off balance, it has bounced by pilots? In other words, let's say there's new builds and then they also give them a pilot to do that. You know, the back end, the formula, then one would could probably could end up countering the other.
Yeah, so the way that you really look at like the tax limit and the tax levy and the pilots is that it's still revenue happening to the school district. It's just the lines that they're coming in for the revenue. So, you know, the tax levy comes into the A101 and the pilot comes into the A1081 or something like that. But there's two revenue lines and when a pilot comes on, it goes to that other line. Normally, of course, there is incentive to those companies. So they save taxes, they make deferred taxes or they're taxed at a lower percentage for, you know, a certain amount of years and things like that. But you can certainly see that the pilots could offset or off balance the acquisition. Yep. And then just to add, there is no pension exclusion for this year. There was a small one last year for some districts, but there is none. And again, that number would be given to us from the state. So that is really was feeding into the tax levy and why we're seeing, you know, the tax levy limit of 3.26%. So then just to kind of summarize that, so the maximum allowable tax levy limit for 2526 would be about $48,116,000. We talked about the one and a half million and the 3.26% increase. So in comparison from last year, where the tax levy was 46.6 billion.
Angela, just for the benefit of some new board members and just in general, that number we talk about, the $48,161,200, what is that 3.26% of?
I don't remember.
The tax levy percent increase has added some of the allowable tax levy and now much more about?
Oh, it's from, from this slide right here. So the 2% of it, or about 2% of it is from about $942,000. And then another piece is the pilots decreasing, but then that brick and mortar kind of investment in the area. So that is coming about from now.
Thanks.
And then just, we just wanted to summarize kind of the 10-year history of the levies for everybody so you can see here what the tax levy limit increased and then what the actual levy increase was. So, you know, once we put out tax levy limits, we do try to go out of the tax levy limit or we might strengthen that a little bit. The average has been about 1.5% for the 10 years. And then with the proposed for the upcoming 2526, it goes up to 1.56%.
Thank you for mentioning that. I think that's an important thing to share with our community. Now, as we're looking traditionally at 2% for very few of our 7, 20, 19, 20, that, in that particular school year. But when you look at the average across the past 10 years, it's 1.4%. And then if you add the 3.56, it goes up to 1.56%. So it's still an average, you know, year to year over year, less than what I think our community perceives as the 2% tax cap, which really is a 2% cap within that, that reality.
Yes, it definitely makes it a little tricky when we think about the 2% cap. It's kind of on everybody's mind, but it really is 2% embedded in all of these other numbers and steps.
I share that with the board because we'll put that in the newsletter, Bush newsletter, use that as part of our public relations. The information speaks, we have a very supportive community, but when they see changes that are going to appear, and one of the pauses in this presentation is to get your support for going out to that, that maximum level. We always, I always quote that because if you don't capture that entire money now and next year we realize a smaller number, we've lost in our ability to capture those, that amount. And it compounds over time. So the districts just that decide, oh, just go to zero. I know we can ask for 3.26, but let's just keep it flat. And they do that for year after year, they find themselves in significant financial trouble because now to go out to make up for that, we have to be astronomical, you know, 10, 20%.
Right, absolutely, because every year, no matter what, we start our formula for the tax levy limit at the base of the prior year. So the prior years have always been less than what they could have been. We're always going to always have less than in the future than what we could have, so.
So we reviewed a little bit of this last month. So our budget reduction process to date. We've reduced building and program budgets across the district by 10%. We have reduced contract services, again, based on need and impact. We carefully reviewed every piece of the district. We shifted restorative practice services to BOSI's because again, we get aid back on services that we run through BOSI's. So it'll be a revenue source for us in the future. We've shifted three buildings and grounds positions into the cafeteria fund to take them out of the general fund. We've reviewed class sizes and shifting needs to reduce positions through attrition. So again, maintaining programs, maintaining positions. Again, when people are retiring, we're looking, if people are resigning for whatever reason, we're looking at when we might not need to have a position.
Another thing I would just add is every group class sizes and shifting needs is to maintain to the best of our current ability, equity across class sizes. So we use the same kind of standard applied, whether we need to add a section or reduce a section. And I really appreciate the work that we did and supported all the processes that were in place this year. Sometimes you don't know this information, but this early, we can kind of wait and let's see what our faculty and staff as well.
So again, you see the total reduction there and the breakout of personnel is the biggest factor, is the biggest cost for the district and then contract materials and supplies. So all total, we were able to reduce $4.3 million. So here you see an added glance of anticipated expenditures for the 24, 25, 26 school year. So the instructional salaries, you'll see a very small percent increase and that's because the reductions are reflected in that already. Same for the non-instructural salaries. Equipment, you'll see that reduction and that again is the money that will set us out for our one-time expense for the vans this year. So next year, we don't have that expense, so that's why that shows as a decrease. We reduce contractual expenses, we reduce materials and supplies. See an increase in BOSI services because again, we do have a lot of our special ed services through BOSI's and of course, the cost of personnel and insurance and all of that continues to go up, just like for us. The retirement system, the ERS and the TRS, again, you see that reduction and that's because of the reduction of staff. Social Security, again, that's smaller than it normally would look. And significant pieces there. So here is the first look at the three-part budget summary. So again, administrative is all of our BOSI services, all of our contracts, a whole bunch of services. And then program is instructional, the buildings, what takes one of the buildings. And then the capital would be our building projects, et cetera.
When we craft the three-part budget, which is something I mentioned tonight, so we do everything to try to continue with the same proportion at each of the three parts. So you can see the 10.61 administrative, you know, is going to be at 10.66. So try to keep that we're not shifting, trying to take more out of one area than the other, whenever possible to maintain. And that's how we're always working with the maintain program.
So again, you see a budget surplus of $0, so expenditures balance out with our revenues. So our next steps, we are working closely with central business office, with Angela and Cynthia Wamboldt, to evaluate expenditure-driven aids based on current law. So again, we will see what happens when the actual state budget comes out. So if for some reason the inflationary factor is restored to the foundation aid, the budget gap that we have would be closed by putting the increase in foundation aid towards what we have put in our reserves, set aside, going from the reserves to balance the budget. So, you know, everyone has that question of, well, what if we end up getting more money in April? We have a need for it. It will actually help to close the deficit gap that we have, so we should be in good shape. And we'll finish completing our BOSI's final request for service. So we have an estimated cost of all of our special ed placements, et cetera, will cost. And so we'll have that final number before we have a budget to adopt in April.
Thank you, Jennifer. It's one of the points that I wanted to make, because I talk about this often, we talk about budget and the reliance on, on reserves. That was a 60% reduction in reliance on reserves, which is a really good, good thing. So that took some effort as well to make sure, when I was looking at the budget, wanting to stay in something that was a little bit more defined. And optimistically, if they restore the inflationary factor, we won't have to rely on reserves, I believe. Definitely not to, et cetera, at all, so that's good. And I also want to mention that this was kind of the first round, right? But we know when the foundation aid continues to be based on enrollment, that it's going to be adjusted. We're looking careful with the budget, how this goes in terms of will we maintain a whole harmless? Will they maintain nothing less than 2%? Those are all things we're giving an eye on. So as they went through this process, again, maintaining programming or having programs managed to reduce the sizes of programs and make sure that when those programs continue, looking at attrition, looking at projections for the future, we're going to do everything possible to not have any, you know, significant impacts to our students or to our faculty and staff.
So again, the rest of the timeline for the budget process, we'll have a more finalized budget to present in April. And then there's a budget hearing May 6th and then the budget vote takes place on May 20th. Are there any questions?
Jennifer, thank you for the presentation, Angela. I just saw on TV that the legislature just started meeting today in Albany on the budget process. So how good, how good should we feel about Governor Hachul's proposal to raise the foundation aid by to 5.9%, 2% over last year? Are we feeling pretty good that's going to happen? What are the sentiments on that issue? I know it's stifling to, but.
So yeah, so both the branches of legislature did put out their one-house budgets and for the most part, they are wholly support of what the governor has proposed. They do have some variances in some things. They actually would like to see a minimum increase of 2.9 or 3% attending. So we feel pretty good that we're going to at least get that 2% that the governor proposed. We're hoping obviously for the 3%, maybe it'll be, we're hoping for that. They put forth other things, you know, they're trying to up the reimbursement for the BOSI's, salaries, CTE and stuff like that. One of them is trying to put forth higher capital outlays and stuff like that. So we feel pretty comfortable that we're going to see at least that 2%. So the numbers we have are pretty confident. We are not confident that we are going to have it on time with it. So what we may see is that we are sending budgets to all of you guys to approve that we're confident in, that we think we're, you know, we're going to see. Again, we may not have a budget from them, so it could vary a little bit next year if that happens.
Just before you leave, can I ask you a question? At the last meeting, you said we're in the immediate reactism. And so is this enough to react or is this enough reaction for us to be okay?
I think so, yes. Like I said, I think when the Like I said, I think when the one-house budgets came out and they were mostly in line with what the governor has proposed, and even more so, a little bit more than what she's proposing, I think that we feel comfortable with these numbers that are out there. But certainly, we always, you know, have our pulse on it. We're going to adjust as needed. If we hear that negotiations in Albany are not going great, say, April 15, we may be coming to, you know, Dr. Thompson and Jennifer to say, okay, we're seeing or we're hearing this, we may want to give it a little bit and see what needs to happen there. But for the most part, you know, we're going to go out. If we don't hear anything and everything seeming good, we're going to go out at the governor's executive proposal. Because if we do happen to get more state aid next year, we can't adjust the budget then. So we would go out at, you know, higher amounts, the amounts that we have proposed here, so that we are covered if we can get those in, so we can make sure that we can get all those expenses that we're hoping for.
So Angela, just to be clear, in the past, we've sat at getting less money than we wanted and had to fight for more.
Right.
And so you wanted, you know, for them to advocate, we've gone to our legislators and said, please give us this one. This time, they've given us some, obviously, we've always wanted, you know, more, and I have to admit, the reductions have been made. But what I'm hearing you saying is that the budget you're proposing right now, even though the legislators may ask for more, what we're sharing with you is what the executive budget is. And so that's kind of a good place to be in that we made the adjustments to, so that if nothing happens, other than, okay, we'll just do that. Because usually, they're advocating for something more. Something more could be, the one, I think, topic that I heard across the state when I was in the New York State Council Schools Superintendent's and also in the local BOCs budget, was how much more money we're getting back on individual positions that we are funded through BOCs. And so this impacts a lot of the special education costs because we're paying bright term teachers. Those teachers that are there are only getting 80% of the first $30,000 of their salaries and benefits. And as I understand it, that $30,000 was established 20 years ago. And so the legislators are saying, that's not enough, because $30,000 may have been 20 years ago, you know, closer to their salary. Now it's double that, and so we need to be able to get up our stated proportion at a higher amount. That is, if it's something we process state advocating for, that that could realize more money coming back to the district for those investments. I just mentioned, just to see, when you look at our budget, a third of our budget is BOCs and healthcare. Just those two components. They're the large driving factors. And you hear us say this all the time, you know, looking at rising costs for special education costs or alternative education, other than the BOCs, as well as our healthcare costs. So those are things that we are leaning deeply into, because when going to next year, we're going to have to make some other adjustments anticipating for our budget. So I think the long answer should professionalize, and I think that enough, did we do enough? I think the answer, I believe the answer is yes. I think last month, the reduction was something closer to 3.9 million. And I went to Jennifer, I said, we need to go a little bit deeper, we'd feel more comfortable with those 600,000. Really, I'm thinking without those reserves. That's the part that I think of long-term helping position, I want to close that dependency on the reserves cost.
Absolutely. So, yeah, I second that. I think you're right where you need to be for the reductions, and we'll just give you what happens with negotiations in Albany to see if any further adjustments need to be made the way.
Thank you.
Just heard Jennifer, and I know things are, like, shifting around. I mean, I appreciate how difficult it has to be to do a budget and be reducing things and everything. I guess my, it's not really a question, I guess it's a concern of where our numbers are academically, that with maybe more experienced people leaving, or maybe if, I don't know, if just restorative coaches are moving to BOCs, or if it's other coaches as well, and that's something that seemed like it was helping in the schools, that it's still different when new people are coming in and taking over. And I just don't feel like we have a lot of wiggle room for that transition. And I know it's all hard, and I appreciate that no positions have been cut, but the concern for, even if programs aren't eliminated but reduced, or supports are less, people have less experience, like, I'm very concerned about the level of academic support for our kids.
So last year, knowing that we were looking at some not-so-good budget years coming, we were able to shift some coaching services to BOCs so that we can hire smaller veteran retired teachers who are experts in the content areas. So they're being hired through BOCs as professional learning specialists, who are then coming into our buildings and helping to support our teachers with math and ELA. So we're trying to look ahead and build a foundation of support that it will be sustaining, because that'll, we'll get a revenue from that by running it through BOCs and yet still be able to support our teachers. Because as we look at the next five years, we are definitely looking at many, many retirements , which is because of people choosing you.
And are those BOCs people, full-time people, who will be, like, one school, or they're all over the place?
So it's positions that are running through BOCs, and so it's our people, that we get to choose who are hired for those positions, so they're bringing to you.
Where they are, whatever, with their expertise.
So we'll work with the building principals to establish coaching plans. Those individuals' first priority will be grade teachers, and we'll move that to them. We have two this year that came back?
We have four.
Four, yeah. Four came back this year. And so we were able to align them to either building that they previously worked in, a content area that their leadership is strong in, with the needs of our new teachers. We just know, looking in the future, there's going to be even more. And these are, as you said, some of our expert teachers. And often, they will look for something else, and I want to continue a wonderful time. They're looking for something else to kind of ground on. So this is exactly the kind of work that they, those individuals have come to, they came to me, said, what else can I do? How high support about this idea? And then through Jennifer, my brainstorm and talking to BOCs, we created this opportunity. So I'm very pleased with that. I hope any other district that's doing this, they will follow, because it's very, and we eat on it. So it's revenue generating as well as getting the expertise in that's needed to support our teachers.
Thank you. Item 70 on the agenda, a third read of policies, 7224 virtual instruction and 7470 student government. These are new policies and will be adopted in the general G resolutions later on this evening. Any questions on either policy? We saw them last month and prior to that. We have two policies that are for second reads, so they'll be here for a third read and adoption next month. These are revised policies, 6560 determination of employee status and 7223 advanced coursework. We saw these last month for the first time. Are there any questions on 6560 or 7223? Seeing done, we'll move on to, into first item on special reports, the first read of revised policies, 7221 graduation policy. Not a lot here as far as red lines, mostly pertains to the ability of individuals to receive a GED to participate in the graduation ceremony, subject to time limits that are specified in the policy. Are there any questions on 7221?
If I could take this opportunity, because it's an agenda item, graduation. The Commissioner of Education just released an emergency regulation that allows the superintendent to exempt a student who's experiencing extraordinary circumstance and has to take a regis in order to get the diploma. And they have to demonstrate that they have competency in the top, in the subject. So we've done this before with a variety of exemptions. A teacher would sign off and say, no, they're passing the class. But something dramatic has happened to them. The example they gave at the state when they were explaining this was a student's diagnosed with an illness and they're undergoing treatment. They just, they're exhausted, they just can't, and they have to sit through that exam, right, before, in order to pass, pass that test to move on. We have a number of students who go through extraordinary circumstances. We will put a process in place to make sure that, first and foremost, the teacher and the guidance is sent my way, to Jennifer to review, and then for me to review, to understand the circumstance, as well as whether they have obtained the content in that course. This is not, a student's tried a few more times and it's getting traumatic, and they try to forthright. That's not what this is. They made it clear that this isn't going to be intended for districts to do pass-throughs unless this gets gone, or moving on, rather. That this is really listening to the field and looking at the graduation pathways. And this was one thing that the field talked about, is students who were extremely transient, homeless, and living out of vehicles, and look, these kinds of conditions that were really impacting their ability to sit and demonstrate performance in a three-hour exam. So just want to share that with the board, because it's a big talking about graduation paths.
Will they go into effect this year?
It goes immediately. So it will be, it will be in effect this year.
Thank you.
And I will certainly share some data with the board, which was like, how it was utilized within our district and some of those conditions under which I approach exceptions.
Great, thank you. Next item is the update from DEI committee. Call forward, Howard Skinner.
Good evening, everybody. So Mary Ann Callahan is our board representative, who obviously is not able to be here this evening, so I will try my best to hold it down on her behalf. So the way our DEI committee works this year and last school year is we follow the CRSC framework that is set forth by New York State. It's a very comprehensive framework and document, and it's really broken up into four parts. Because the four parts kind of work and connect so nicely, those are our subcommittees that we've created and formed. So those four parts are a welcoming and affirming environment, high expectations and rigorous instruction, inclusive curriculum and assessment, and ongoing professional learning and support. I will fully admit that these things bleed together very quickly, and all roads tend to end to the last subcommittee on professional learning, for obvious reasons, right? We come up with some really good ideas, but in order to implement them, it usually starts with professional learning and continued support of staff. So our whole committee meets quarterly, and then the four subcommittees meet as needed in between. My subcommittee is around high expectations for rigorous instruction. We meet on a monthly basis in between the meetings, where we're reviewing different data sets, coming up with different things that we may want to bring back to the whole committee. Once we have things that we think may be beneficial to the district to explore a little further, we bring them to Dr. Thompson. And I know that there's times where she's talking to all of you about some of those exciting things that we're trying to push through, and we'll highlight some of those this evening as well. So Subcommittee Number One is around a welcoming and affirming environment, and Dawn leads that subcommittee. These are some of the goals that they've kind of set for this, this school year. The first one is looking at our calendar with the lens of equity. Are we, we doing our very best to make sure we're celebrating all students throughout the district? And is there anything that we're missing? And try to get as many eyes on that as we can through the subcommittee first. And they also work with PR on that as well. Assess the school environment for, from our families' perspective. So we have recently sent to buildings posters with QR codes where families can fill out thought exchange, anytime they notice a staff member doing something to help a family believe, belong, or become. So it's a really good way for us to get the pulse of, are our environments welcoming enough for our families? Is this a place that people want to be and feel comfortable coming to? And reviewing progress from the affinity groups, and always looking for new ideas and extensions for those. Dawn, did I do okay? Awesome. So the second subcommittee is the subcommittee that I'm leading up and that Mary Ann also sits on as well. So we are looking at the essential standards work that was done this year. I know I spoke to all of you last spring, I think, about that exciting work that was happening, and prioritizing what's most important and non-negotiable for our students to be learning. So we're looking at and tracking the data around those very closely. EduClimber, which I know we've also discussed in the past, also helps us do that as well. But we're also starting to launch ourselves more into looking at down and by subgroups within EduClimber for those same results. So is there any one particular subgroup that may be a header behind some of the other subgroups, and is there anything that we need to do as a result of that? One thing that we discussed at last night's DEI committee meeting, the full committee meeting, our particular subgroup is looking to move forward with some professional development potentially around EduClimber. We know one of our next steps is to teach teachers to dive a little bit deeper into the subgroups, which also deals with our accountability statuses as well.
Let me ask you, is this where this committee would be looking at, how do we get more students challenging rigorous programs we have, such as AP?
Yep.
As you know, across America now, many schools are saying they're pushing advanced placement. Kids that didn't think they could do that kind of work are being accommodated, the extra time being given, tutorials and so forth. Also, international faculty, I'm thinking, you know, when you say pushing and extending, pushing students beyond their comfort zones, I mean, you know, we don't want mediocrity. So we're challenging rigor, we offer rigorous programs, and we want those kids in those classrooms.
Yeah, and that's a great point, and that is a major focal point for us. And even within those programs, making sure that we're demanding excellence, right? It's not enough that you're in the program.
Right.
But we're always looking for, how can we step outside of that comfort zone and push that, that learning to new levels? We talk a lot with the PLT process around, what are we going to do when students have already mastered what's essential and what are the next steps? And that holds true for all of our students K through 12 and all of our different curriculums and programs. Subcommittee Three is headed up by Carla, and she, this is around inclusive curriculum and assessment. One of the things that they've been focusing on in last Friday at Superintendent Conference Day, we were able to do and offer a lot of training district-wide for 4th, 7th, 8th, 11th, and 12th grade students, or teachers, rather. And there's also been students that have been involved in this PD as well. We are learning through the lens of New York State, and particularly upstate New York, and trying to bring that to our students. We've gotten really, really good feedback from this particular professional development curriculum. It is very interactive. I know I've seen the 4th grade one firsthand. Students are learning about the street names in Binghamton, and to see the excitement on their face and bringing that into the classroom and learning some of the rich history behind who are these streets named after and what does that look like, is really eye-opening to a lot of our students to realize that where they live is a part of history. So that's, that's been really exciting to see take shape. Teachers had really, really exciting, energetic feedback about that and are excited to bring that to the students as well. The reason for those grade levels, our social studies units tie particularly well to those grade levels. 4th grade, again, having seen that unit myself, is one of the social issues units for reading and writing curriculum, and it just ties itself hand in hand, and the two work really nicely together. Also working with department chairs to assess overall inclusivity of our curriculums that are being offered, K through 12 as well. All right. Ongoing professional learning and support, I mentioned this earlier, this tends to be where all things land, because if we're going to try any new initiative, we can't do it and do it well without training teachers and making sure that they're feeling comfortable in whatever it is that we're taking on and working towards. So we're working with building and district leadership right now around cultural behavioral tutorials from Dr. Shurkey's Holly work. I know at our last elementary admin meeting, we talked about what that's going to look like. They are going to focus in on the cultural behavior of spontaneity. We know sometimes our kids can be very spontaneous, and that is something to celebrate, but also harness and build a bridge with our students to realize, we're excited that you're excited, and then there are certain times where we need to be a little bit less excited and answer in a different forum. But it's important that we build that spontaneity into our lesson plans as well, because kids do have that need. That's part of being a young student, is being spontaneous. We also have extended our harmful language training for staff who have not yet received it. That also took place on March 14. That was an excellent, excellent session. And Jennifer and I, in debriefing after, also learned that there's some special offerings that they give just towards elementary now. So they're starting to differentiate that professional learning a little bit more to be secondary and high school level, all the way down to kindergarten. So it's the same training, but they're giving different scenarios based on the age of the students that you would be working with. So that was also encouraging for the future. Working through suggestions with other subcommittees, so I mentioned that's a big piece of all of this. Anytime we think that professional learning needs to happen because we're trying something Anytime we think that professional learning needs to happen because we're trying something new, that's something that we would run by this group. And the last thing that we're looking at through the spring meeting is the words diversity, equity, and inclusion, and do they continue to align with the work of our mission that we're looking to fulfill here through our DEI committee and through the district?
Just to get a little more context, that was something I asked the committee to look at. The reason being that when we created this, if you recall, it was a DEI task force, and that was a result of a movement for districts, who's the education department, to adopt DEI prop policies, have groups that were looking at DEI. So, we just kind of inherited and took that language and fit it into the district. There's a lot of conversations around DEI right now, and what is it, this understanding and misunderstanding going on. So, I just wanted the committee to pause and say, oh, these continue to be the right words. The word, as a board, we've talked about the word diversity quite a bit, and what does it mean to us? Does it really articulate, or what would be intended to mean? Does it mean... To whose advantage is it? To be diverse, is that the right word we should be using? Give you another example, we've all done some work with Kevin McCallum in his district, did an example, did this, I think he did something like this, an exercise. I lost it, because I was going to reference something on his website, and it's now called Opportunities and Access. So, he's, there's another letter in there, opportunities and access and belonging, that's what it is. So, they must have done some thinking about language, and what does it really mean for us as a district? As to what the word, which is just better defined for us. So, that's what they're going to do. They may come back and still be recommended to be DEI, but if the timing is appropriate for Chippewa, because this is a board committee, and they don't want to make any change, the line won't be the time to let people back to it.
And as we look at that as well, the overall structure really lends itself to really good instruction and really good instruction for all kids, and that's ultimately what everyone wants, and it is not negotiable. So, how can we be as reflective to those four tenants or principles as possible? One exciting thing that we just wanted to also highlight is a new partnership with the Harriet Tubman Center for Freedom and Equity at Binghamton University. So, they are unveiling a new statue coming up here on March 21st, which is this Friday. We will be sending groups of students there, a group of 5th grade students from Woodrow Wilson is going there. We have our IB Advanced Art Class going there, and there'll also be extension opportunities for that IB Advanced Art Class. The sculptor herself is going to come in, do a little bit of presentation and a Q and A with some of the students around, one, the inspiration for creating the piece, but also to some of the technical aspects of sculpting and things that she uses every day in her career as a artist. And then we'll also be sending a group of students, I believe, from West Middle School to that as well. So, just something that we wanted to highlight. We hope that is the start of a rich partnership with the Harriet Tubman Center. I've heard some really good things in more recent months, and we're looking to branch out and collaborate as much as we can. Is there any questions for us?
A simple, from the QR codes, have you got many, like, data responses from certain schools, or able to draw any conclusions, or do anything with that information?
Yes. Do you want to speak, Jonathan?
I can speak a little bit, because I look at that data through PR. Certainly some schools have more activity and responses, are trying to push out all the forms, because it's a poster in the building, right? Parent-teacher conference sites have been extra having an hour, what people, parents are waiting, something like that, those kinds of things. We didn't really operationalize it that way, but the responses have been fantastic, really complimentary and specific. Or something that's going on, it was wonderful, that this building there is doing AB and C. And so, we're just kind of playing with that concept. We really wanted to get it as a, put something in to help us as one piece of measurement for our mission. So, any ideas I'll go into, but the concept was first, let's start with getting that. And there, it's all coming along. So, ideally, what would happen is after it runs for a full year, I could present the report to the board, this is what our community's saying about, we want to come, this is how we responded to that. I would also, I would also add that this is the month that we start to push out our climate culture survey. Our faculty were required to take, the staff were required to take it this past Friday. We have students that will begin, we need to take it, and we'll push that to parents as well. So, that's another piece of looking at our culture, and where are some opportunities for us to grow in that area.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the second of the two public comment portions of the meeting. Does anyone want to fill out the speaker? We'll move on to new business, superintendent's recommendations, certified C resolutions. Could I have a motion, please, on Resolution C1 through C7? By Liza, seconded by Albert. And Albert, would you mind reading Resolution C1?
Certainly. Resolution C1. Whereas Mary Dear Penna has served the Binghamton City School District as a business teacher from October 2014 to June 2015, faithfully and continuously since 18 October 2021, as the last Department of Education Guidance Chair. Whereas Mary Dear Penna has submitted her intention to retire effective at the end of the day on July 31, 2025.
Oh, the character of the name. We'll think of it, yeah. Because that's just the name.
Now, therefore, be it resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent schools, the Board of Education does hereby accept the request for retirement. We therefore resolve that the Board of Education extends to Mary Dear Penna its sincerest thanks, and thanks to the community for their efforts on behalf of the students of the district. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education extends to them its sincerest, best wishes for long and happy and prosperous retirement.
Great, thank you. With that, we're ready to proceed to our call.
Ms. Middleton?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mrs. Button?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrosa?
Yes. Certified sidepin CS resolutions, could I have a motion, please, on Resolutions CS1 through CS4? Moved by Liza, seconded by Carrie. We have a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Middleton?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mrs. Button?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrosa?
Yes. Non-certified NC resolutions, could I have a motion, please, on Resolutions NC1 through NC8? Moved by Carrie, seconded by Liza, we have a couple of retirements. So, I'll go ahead and read the first part of NC1. Retirement Joan Bowers, whereas Joan Bowers has served the Binghamton City School District faithfully and continuously since September 26, 2005, as a teacher's aide, and whereas Joan Bowers has submitted her intention to retire effective at the end of the day, June 30, 2025. Shontae, could you please read the first paragraph on NC2?
Yes. Whereas Chris Rosak has served the Binghamton City School District faithfully and continuously since August 23, 1988, as a clerical support, and whereas Chris Rosak has submitted their intention to retire effective at the end of the day on September 30.
Thank you. And Carrie, would you be able to read NC3, both paragraphs?
Whereas Rosella Stotker has served the Binghamton City School District faithfully and continuously since October 3, 2016, as a clerical support, and whereas Rosella Stotker has submitted their intention to retire effective at the end of the day on March 31, 2025. Now, therefore, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education does and hereby accepts the request for retirement, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education extends to Joan Bowers, Chris Rosak, and Rosella Stotker its sincerest thanks, and the thanks of the community for their efforts on behalf of the students of the district, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education extends to them its sincere best wishes for long, happy, and prosperous retirement.
Thank you. And with that, we're ready to proceed to our roll call.
Ms. Middleton?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mrs. Button?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrosa?
Yes. And the general G resolutions, could I have a motion, please, on G1 through G13? Moved by Shontae and seconded by Albert, and there's two donations that I will read. Scroll on to G7 and G8. G7, donation resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education accepts the monetary donation from Alpha Kappa Alpha Nu Omega in the $500 to Roosevelt Elementary School, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education approves an increase to the 2425 general fund appropriation, the amount listed above. G8 donation resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education accepts a donation of a percussion kit from Dell Parsons, approximately valued $499. So, that will be in the roll call vote.
Ms. Middleton?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mrs. Button?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrosa?
Yes. And as part of the G resolutions that we just approved is G11, setting the date for the school board election and budget vote for Tuesday, May 20, 2025. And as noted earlier, the public hearing on the budget will take place on the evening of May 6. And with that, we're ready to go on to updates from the superintendent.
Hey, fantastic. It has been a week of celebrations. I can't, truly, we've been shining all over the county and across the state. So, I want to first just recognize our boys and girls, our basketball, varsity, going on to sectionals, our girls, they phenomenal, absolutely phenomenal, losing in overtime to horse heads. And of course, our boys moving on to the state level, first time in 39 years, this Thursday. I wanted to share with our Board of Education, we've been able to plan, and it's been a huge team effort. We put out notice on Monday to families that the high school will be taking a field trip, starting at 2:00. Entire high school will be going over to the arena. Their tickets are being paid for by the district. I want to tell you how I manage that. So, it occurred to me, as I was contemplating this on Sunday, that we take our 5th graders to a baseball game every year, and we pay for that, and we pay for that as a field trip through our mission poster. And so, Jennifer asked Jennifer to reach out to Carrie Bullock, who is a D teacher, and say, how can we make this work? And so, it is being aided through OSI, so significant, significant cost, and it's just a great celebration for our students. We also extended the invitation to our girls and boys, basketball, youth, that modified and youth. Kyle Skinner helped support the organization of that. It was a field trip, slump, if you will, that was sent out. Within less than 24 hours, 76 parents replied with a yes. I think that was just huge in terms of, and help with, they're coming with their jerseys and someone in supervision. The high school team is phenomenal, of teachers to administrators, and working collaboratively. Normally, there's a faculty, was going to be a faculty meeting on Thursday afternoon, so we blew our faculty meeting this month. The teachers will go over and hopefully would stay through the end of the basketball game. I don't know who would want to leave, however, I will appreciate the support of the ETA's leadership, as well as having this here tonight, as well as the teachers rallying tonight. And this is a great, you know, a great thing for our students and for our school. So, I think those are the highlights. Because we're paid for them, it's a separate entrance. We've asked for the names of PD to be an escort, to support, you know, traffic control, as some of the students were walking down there. Now, of course, I'm assuming they're going to win Thursday. So, my head then is those two, Friday at 6:00. What are we going to do about that? So, I then turned to very capable Eric Olson and House Senator, who worked with some of our largest contract services through Capitol Projects and so on, and I said, start making calls, because we're going to need donations to cover some ticket prices for Friday. So, no promises yet, we have some, with some promises coming in, and optimistically, maybe the turnaround, we'll get on Thursday, Friday, come for the process to offer free tickets to high school students, they will then again show up on Friday. I don't know all high school students, but we'll figure out a way to make them to the hands of those kids who want to go. So, really excited about this. It's like a community effort, very, very good, lots of positive feedback. For the coaches, the players, I think they're all. They will also do a clap out where all school pad pauses, and the students walk through the halls onto a bus, and they clap, and then it's very intense. We do that for all of our athletes, for our bowlers who went on to states, our track who went on to states, our wrestlers who went on to states. So, it is a common occurrence. So, very, very excited, and just lots of celebrations across. I think the other piece of this that just brings the most to my heart is that when this last time happened, of course, you may know the name of King Race. One of our players in our current team is going to be playing for King Race next fall. So, kind of a comical circle. But I also want to say, what an incredible weekend we had for the arts as well. Our musical was just phenomenal. A huge shout out to Jim Byron, who took over our musicals and our plays this year. It was so, the music was now only so well done, but the sound quality, the imagery promoted me, if you haven't had an opportunity to go. They had a vote, is that the vote that was mechanical and had the end? And also just staging the audience, because I know where my favorite seat was, it was comfortable, I'm fabric, I wasn't too happy, but it forced me to sit in the middle. And so, he explained that when you're on that stage looking at the audience, you want, you know, to be looking at the audience, the full audience, not like, and so. So, they just did, just once again, just an absolutely incredible job. Played NISBA this past weekend, our middle school students again made a shy, I don't remember off the top of my head, but it was, the information was coming in, it just made me super proud of them. Of course, last weekend, we had a state of mind, 21 teams, 21 teams we sent. There were only four school districts, if we're counting, in addition to Catholic schools, four school districts now we're down to, who sent teams. So, we, everyone was turning around and saying, well, what representation nation has? And 17 teams are moving on to states. So, it's, again, a great tribute to arts and science in combination. It was a really good, really good thinking. Yeah, so I'm rattling off all these wonderful things. And lastly, in terms of wonderful celebrations, and we have a school board, a student school board member speaking here tonight, who was there. On Monday, we had seniors serving seniors. So, I don't think we maybe talked about that, and Mary Ann Callahan was very much loving the idea. So, the seniors went down to the senior center, and it was packed, like, there was no parking and parking was on the streets, wasn't there? They were so appreciative of our seniors, serving them their St. Patrick's Day luncheon. The smiles were here. Did you want to comment, Beth?
Yeah, no, the parking was terrible. I had to park at the barabado across the street. No, but we all had a great time. It was very fun.
It was, and they, we tell they were just enjoying it, kind of joking with a couple of students, and any of them had served at Thanksgiving dinner, but also just, there's another opportunity that the director there shared with us, I think it's in May, so we'll celebrate, we'll look for other volunteers to do that as well, and they've established themselves there. They're definitely want us back. That was fantastic. We also held a meeting on the transportation and safety concerns that come before the board, Dr. Penna was there. That meeting was held last week, I believe.
Which?
I want to say, I will forward for minutes on for that being to the board, so you can see details. But we had represented, three parents, and two representatives from first students.
Right.
Three, three, we had two first students, and their safety person, Dr. Penna was there, as well as our school safety coordinator, right, Dennis. And so, totally other people in the room, to begin the conversation, there were things explained, there were things, lots of questions asked. We're going to continue this conversation, and hopefully with the objective of coming up with some concrete things that we can, we can actually change and influence for our project, for the conversations. There are some things that are just, like, national protocols that may take a little bit longer in changing, and that next meeting has already been scheduled, will be happening at the end of April. So, that work is continuing, but I'm thankful for our team to be able to get together and see an outcome rather quickly for that. And the last thing I want to say is that we moved the Patriot Ambassador, our presentation was going to be tonight, but Mary Ann Callahan has specifically asked for a presentation on that, so it's speaking with Steve, I asked to move that to next month. That will be on the agenda. In addition, we're going to be talking about student board members. So, there, NISBA had intimated that they're going to be coming in with some guidance. They haven't come out with any guidance. In our district, they're going to have a public vote that we would have a student board member, and hence, they have been along with us. Other districts have never had this, had a student board member presence, they're trying to figure out the process and so on. What I will bring to that discussion is a kind of administrative regulation around what we currently do, and we'll ask for some input from our student board members. And we'll ask for some input from our student board member and the board. And this is how we want to continue to function and have that beginning conversation. But we already have it in place, so we're good for September 1. But just more about how to operationalize it, what that might kind of look like. I'm going to collect some ideas from my colleagues who are also been doing the same thing with us. Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, it's just unreal. The excitement is off the charts for this basketball team. And I was on social media late last night and looked at the comments that gave in response to the announcement about this being a field trip and we want to do what we can to get all the kids there. And the people are just so thankful and so excited. It's just great to see everybody coming together around this and just appreciative of everybody's efforts to, you know, to take advantage of this tremendous opportunity to have these games here, you know? And hopefully these look and feel as much as possible like home games. And I love that we treat this as much as possible as an all-in type of experience. And I can't wait for, I'm so nervous. I'm more nervous than I was during the college football playoff. I didn't think that was even possible, so.
I may just comment a little bit. I was, I was there 40 years ago this time. And the nice thing about, it was a great time then, it's a great time now. But if you think about our mission of our statement, believe, belong, and become for those boys to understand little old things and go on to, maybe go on to the state championship. Back in 85 and 86, no one believed it. Our tallest student was six feet three. And we didn't have huge people. We beat teams from local state, from New York City, right on through. The nice thing about this time, 40 years later, it's not in Lance Falls, it's right in our backyard. So it's wonderful.
Thank you.
I hope regardless of the outcome, as I convinced them maybe to be recognized of, for me in the future, I think that it would be, it would be a mission.
Our next meeting will be Tuesday, April 15. Dr. Thompson had shared a couple of things on the agenda. The school recognition will be for Arthur Elementary. We'll have discussion of the shared decision to plan and then perhaps most important, the presentation of the final budget before the voters on the 20th. And with that, I have a motion to adjourn. Moved by Carrie, seconded by Albert, on paper.